Sure. Who can we pass it off to? Want to lead the pledge?
Mr. Stumbo.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Evening.
Hello. Excuse me. Welcome to the weekly business session for October 12, 2011. We'll begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Stumbo, would you like to lead?
Sure.
Thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, the first thing on our agenda is a public hearing in the matter of annexation to the Illinois Valley Fire District by petition of landowner. It's without election or approval. So this is just a person. It says Janice Marie May, who would like to include a portion of her tax lot into the Illinois Valley Fire District. It's pretty straightforward. We have examples, exhibits here, but maybe we should just read it by title, because they already have. But if you want to make a motion, do we have to read this by title?
I think we have to do that.
Okay.
Just open a public hearing.
All right. Does anybody have anything to say about this annexation to the Illinois Valley Fire District? I don't see the property owners here. This is a pretty straightforward thing. So we'll bring it, we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the annexation of the, yeah, petition of the tax lots 3908-24 TL 301.
Yep.
Annexation into the Illinois Valley Fire District.
Point five three acres.
Sure. Point five.
Three acres. I'll second it. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. Secretary, please call roll.
Commissioner Hare?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
Yes. Motion passes two yes and one not here. So passes. Next on our calendar here is, it says administrative action and consideration of, it says letter of agreement between Josephine County and DEQ for voluntary cleanup of dimic property. So we have our facilities director to tell us about this.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Rich Halliday, Josephine County Facility Director.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to request a signature for the formal agreement with the Department of Environmental Control Equality to join their voluntary cleanup program for the dimic tower. The signature on this facilitates the consulting from them on the project as well as getting them paid through the grant funding stream.
Yeah. No cost to the county?
No cost to the county.
You said for us?
It's funded by the grant.
Yeah, and it's the first in the series of a ton of paperwork that we're going to get.
Yes, yes ma'am, it is.
Yeah, and so this is yahoo. We're going to get help cleaning up our dimic property. Well, thank you very much for the help you did on securing all this.
No, looks good.
Thank you.
Any comments on this item? Go ahead, Dale.
Dale Matthews, Grants Pass. I believe the Department of Environmental Quality would join me in congratulating Rich for being such a good bureaucrat, such a good head of the department, and we're all lucky to have him at any price. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. That being said, anybody else? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I move to approve the letter of agreement between Josephine County and DEQ for voluntary cleanup of the dimic property and also for the chair to sign on behalf of the board for this contract.
Okay, I'd be happy to. Thank you. I'll second it. No further discussion, right? So would you please call roll?
Commissioner Hare?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
Yes. Motion passes two to zero, because Don's absent. Next is our consent calendar. It's a resolution 2011-055 in the matter of appointments to the Board of Property Tax Appeals, affectionately known as BACTA. And you didn't want to do this this year.
No, not really.
It's a lot of work, but you learn a lot.
You just went through all the training, so you know, you've got to depreciate it over two years.
Okay. Well, this is my third year.
You did a good job.
This will be my third, yeah.
Oh, was it really? You just did the training last year, though, right?
Yeah, you have to do it every year.
Oh.
You know, so in various stages.
Well, have fun with that.
He doesn't want to do it.
We have the same people, though. I wondered if that was, you usually have objections to reappointing.
Yeah.
What do you think about?
I don't know, because I.
Well, you worked with them. Were they?
Oh, they're excellent.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
Usually work with Tom Bork and Paul Wilson.
Okay.
And waiting in the wings is Richard Smith, because I think he's on a board, I don't know which board, but, so he could represent government. Normally, they usually have.
Dick Smith out of Merlin? He's on.
Yeah.
Well, he's on a lot of boards.
Yeah, he is.
So.
And usually, historically, it's been somebody from the BCC, but.
Yeah.
He's waiting in the wings in case nobody from the BCC wants to do it, so, which came close this year.
Glad you're here.
Yeah, there you go. And then Harry Mackin also, I think he attended training last year, so he's up and running.
Kind of an alternate.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So anyway.
All right.
Well, does anybody have any comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the resolution 2011-055 in the matter of appointments to the Board of Property Tax Appeals, affectionately known as BACTA.
Thanks.
For you.
So I'll second it. Any further discussion?
No, thanks.
Would you please call roll?
Commissioner Hare?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
Yes, motion passes.
What was that?
Like a vote of two. Okay, so now we're at the fun part. Let's open it up to requests from citizens. Jim, and then, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Mr. Washburn.
Okay. Mr. Washburn. Oh, God.
It's not that bad. You haven't read it?
This is not good.
No.
Jim Frick, 478 Rowan Drive, Grants Pass, Oregon. As chairman of the Southern Oregon Resource Alliance, we're really concerned because this is a typical example of what noncoordination with our county board of commissioners and elected officials means to us coming from the governor of the state of Oregon. So with regard to the matter of creation of wild rogue wilderness area in Josephine County, before the Board of County Commissioners of Josephine County, I have given this resolution of whereas the governor of Oregon has nominated 58,000 acres of federally owned forest land located along the rogue wild and scenic area for establishment as federal wilderness area, and whereas the Secretary of Interior has indicated that he will make a decision or nomination on October 15th of this year, whereas the 58,000 acres at issue consist totally of lands designated for permanent forest production under the 1937 Oregon and California Revested Lands Act, whereas commercial utilization of the ONC lands is critical to the economy of the county and fiscal viability of county government, and whereas the topography of the particular lands at issue precludes foot entry by all but a few young and hardy, and whereas the creation of logging roads associated with the timber production is continuing beneficial legacy in the form of access to these lands for the majority of this county's population, whereas a particular configuration of the ownership of tracks of these particular ONC lands is contiguous rather than the tradition checkerboard, and whereas the lack of intermittent tracks of private ownership lands will preclude any creation of any roads at all into or through the 58,000 acres, whereas Josephine County is already burdened with presently existing nonproductive land masses, including portions of the Calmioops Wilderness Area, portions of the Red Bug's Wilderness Area, the Wild and Scenic Area, the Wild and Scenic River Corridor, and the Oregonian Caves National Monument, and whereas it is desirable that the ONC lands be managed for the recreational, economic, and government funding benefits to the people, government, and economy of Josephine County for which they were created. Now therefore be it ordered that the county shall make public proclamation of its opposition to the creation of the new wild rogue wilderness area, and be it further ordered that notice of proclamation be forwarded forthwith to the Secretary of the Department of Interior, the Governor of Oregon, and the entire Oregon delegation to the United States Congress.
Great.
And the other thing I was going to say is that this monster came about because all the governors of the United States were asked to come up with crown jewels that they felt should go into wilderness protection, and naturally ours is the largest one in the entire state, 58,000 acres they want to take away from the citizens, and there's eight thousand and two nine thousand acre tracks elsewhere in the state. So I would really appreciate your consideration on this. Any questions?
I have a ton of them. I want to see on here, instead of with regard to the matter of, because it may, when I just first glanced on this, oh, no, we're not going a wilderness area, please, can we change it regarding opposition to the matter of creation of, we have to put.
You can put whatever you want there that Steve Rich says is appropriate language that you didn't.
Thank you. And then also, you know, we do have, before I came into office, it may have been Riddle, Raffenberg, and Ellis, or it could have been, I don't think I signed it, it was just before me, so whoever, you know, was in office, you know, just before me, it's probably Toler, Raffenberg, and Ellis. But we have a resolution that says we do not want any wilderness areas in Josephine County. There is a resolution out there. So maybe we could add another whereas. Whereas Josephine County has a resolution that determine that we don't have any wildernesses in our area. We can add that whereas to this.
That'd be wonderful. Time is really of the essence, though, because October 15th is when Salazar is giving all the governors of the states and making their decisions on which ones they're going to put in as their crown jewels.
I want to tell you something. I went last Friday to the LCDC roundtable at four o'clock, I guess it was.
By the way, thank you for all three of you taking the news.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, well, whatever. And so I sat right next to the governor's guy that was with Natural Resources, and I, he said he just got back from Washington, D.C., you know, because, you know, he's doing all this, and I looked him straight in the eye, and I says, could you please tell me if the Siskiyou Crest area is included in these crown jewel areas? And he says, I don't know. And then what was it? Two days later, we come out with this malarkey? He bullface lied to me. He knew it was there, and, you know, they're on my it list.
Good.
Yeah.
Appreciate that very much.
Yeah, it's just not appropriate for the governor's staff to lie to a commissioner and say, I don't know if it's going to be a crown jewel area or not. That's, it's inappropriate. And anyways, we will do this, your name came up today, might as well tell you now because, rather than tell you later, but.
Doesn't surprise me.
Yeah.
She hasn't said whether it was good or bad yet.
What we did is a few of us went to Doris, California today, this morning.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was really good. The sheriff, Gilbertson, was there, and Sheriff Lopey, I guess his name is, from Siskiyou County. They are forming, we are forming, or they are forming an alliance so that we can get, like, the miners, Sora, the sheriff's department, everybody together to have an alliance. They're doing crackerjack work in Siskiyou County by having their alliance over there. And so they want your name and number, so if you don't mind, I'll email that, and they'll send you information.
That's absolutely perfectly fine with me.
I borrowed Dale's camcorder and I videotaped it, so hopefully, you know, he'll make a DVD out of it, and we can put it up on our government station so that we could play it, so that everybody can see what was happening. It was very, very educational. One of the miners, David McAllister, volunteered to be, to work with Gil in order to coordinate where all Siskiyou, Jackson, Josephine, and Klamath counties are all getting together. Enough's enough. And, yeah, they're really going to do a good job, and they have, also, I wanted to tell you, the same outfit is, okay, I'll give you, this is part of the agenda that they passed out. They're going to have, there's a group called Defend Rural America, who's very involved with this also, and not this Saturday, but next Saturday, they're going to have a get-together in Wyrika. They're going to show a film that they produce, but, and it's free, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Wyneema Hall at the Wyrika Fairgrounds, October 22nd. Come stand with Rural America. It's just how we can stand up and defend rural America, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
It's great stuff.
Hopefully.
And sorry I had to give you such short notice on that, on this and that meeting, but.
Yeah.
I think it was important that everybody knew about it.
It is coming up, and just on another, while we're rolling with natural resource stuff, you know, I have to, we really have to, the sheriff said that he got his copy a couple of, I think it was last week, of the draft travel management plan by BLM.
Yes.
It's this huge, thick thing, and you know, thick, what did I say, sick thing? Thick thing.
And sick, too.
Yeah, it's that, too. And you know what? Maybe we can, next Thursday's admin, not this one coming up tomorrow, but next Thursday, if you can prep for it and read it, so that, I think we only have 45 days in order to respond to that.
We do.
So, you know, we're going to have to talk about it, and maybe we can get the input from the miners and everybody, and Sora, anybody who wants to see it. I'm going to ask our webmaster if they can put it on the county website.
Oh, great.
So that everybody can see it. It's in a digital version. They only gave us one paper version.
Sure.
For three commissioners. What are we supposed to do, you know?
Huddle, read it? I don't think so.
You know, divide the thing in thirds?
Osmosis.
Yeah, so I'll ask for two, a couple more copies.
Let's put it on for a general discussion, and we can have some sort of letter.
On the admin?
Doesn't have to be on the admin. It can be a special, general discussion.
Okay.
That we use for Title III projects.
All right.
We can do it then, and then draft a letter or whatever we want.
Okay, yeah, we'll do it then, then, too, but we have to do this. And then also, I just meant to ask you, please, to see if you can get Jackson County's coordination plan, okay? Because I know Jack Swift said he got it, but, you know, we need a copy so that we can put it on the website, the county website, and then people can maybe view it and find out what's going on over there. I'd love to, I'd love to see what's going on over there, you know, what they, they spent a lot of money to have it drafted. And our, I did talk to, go to our Natural Resource Coordinating Committee meeting, and, you know, I passed along our sentiments, come on, let's go, you know, it's been too long, let's get going. So they're going to have a workshop tomorrow, they're going to meet at a field trip. They're going to meet at eight o'clock in the morning in front of the courthouse, and Jeff Garcia is going to take everybody on a little tour of the, all the different mining areas, I guess, in the county. Next month, they will have their timber field trip, and so I think it'll be good. I won't be able to go because I have a meeting, but if you could ask, you know, somebody to videotape it, that would be, you know, could we get Peggy, maybe?
Yeah.
You know?
I'll try.
Ask, call her up. Are you going to go to it tomorrow?
I didn't even know about it until you just told me, but.
Oh, my God.
I think I might. Sounds good.
Yeah, field trip tomorrow morning, eight o'clock, about mining.
Did you hear about Douglas County, what had happened when the U.S. Forest Service met with the sheriff and 90 different business people up there last week?
No.
They announced that they were going to decommission 5,000 miles of road in Douglas County.
Oh, God.
And everybody left except for the sheriff to finish out that conversation.
Five thousand?
Five thousand miles of roadway.
In the travel management plan that we have, we're going from 4,513 to 4,500, they're decommissioning seven miles.
Seven miles.
Seven is all that they propose.
Two different sites, though, right?
Oh, yeah, totally. It's two different sites, and it's totally different than what they're doing in Douglas County.
That's what I thought.
So.
Good. Well, thank you, guys, for what you're doing.
You're welcome. Take it easy, and thanks for the resolution. I guess we can talk about it in one of the next meetings coming up.
Well, we'll do it tomorrow.
Yeah.
We have to do it.
We can talk about it tomorrow?
I don't know about the, well, we can talk about it tomorrow, but the topography one and few young and hardy, I don't know.
Okay, all right.
Because it's perfectly fine with me.
All right.
But not the fact that it's wilderness area. I mean, it should be inclusive of everybody.
Okay.
I think that we need to have staff put that general discussion for the travel management plan on.
Tomorrow's?
No. We'll need it on soon. I think probably, don't we typically have those on Tuesdays or Thursdays in the evenings? Three o'clock? Can't remember which day.
The general discussions.
General discussion.
Have often on Mondays.
Oh, Mondays. Okay. Monday.
We can stay on.
Yeah, but it's just like, you know, how are you guys going to read it? That's the whole thing.
The book is about that.
Can't we make, it's a book?
It's a book.
So we can't make a copy. We need another book.
We need three, two more books, so.
Well, as soon as you can get them. If you can get them by next week, we can do it Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe Thursday afternoon.
And then they gave me, us the electronic copy, so I'll try to see if I can duplicate it.
Print it.
It's, no, it's to go on your computer.
Oh.
It's that big thick book and all the maps that are put on a CD.
Oh, okay.
So I'll see if I can't duplicate a copy for you and Don while we're waiting for our paper copies.
Perfect.
Oh, I said Mr. Washburn next, and then Michael, and then, and then Dale. Mr. Washburn? Hello?
Eric Washburn, Josephine County, Grants Pass. I have a proposal I brought before you tonight from me and all the people I've been talking to for the past month, and I'd like to thank Ms. Cassinelli for bringing this out in the open, and I'd like to thank Mr. Hare for acknowledging it's much-needed passage. I have copies of the proposal. It's to reduce our building fees by 50%.
Oh, great.
And abolish our home occupancy and/or medical hardship fees.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Here's an extra.
Okay. Oh, and this is for Don.
And I need not tell you that everybody I've talked to has applauded this, and thank you very much.
Yeah, I had an opportunity to speak with our planning director today, Mr. Wechner, and it's going to go through, their proposal is going to go through the Planning Commission. Unfortunately, they didn't know whether or not the hearings for this are going to take place this month or next month, and honestly, they needed to take place last month. So I think we could probably, it'd be great, we'll probably discuss it tomorrow at our admin meeting, but encouraging the Planning Commission to do much like the Coordination Committee.
Well, when I went to the Planning Commission, they instructed me that you folks were the only ones that had the authority to do something about this, and so that's why I'm here.
I don't know if the medical hardship fees are something that the county can waive. I'm not too sure.
That's what the Planning Commission would determine.
Yeah.
They would, they would provide the resolution so that we would just be able to approve it.
Thank you very much.
So they kind of do the work on that stuff.
Okay, you guys.
Thank you so much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next is.
Lots to remember to do tomorrow.
Few reductions. Michael.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Hi.
Michael Klein.
How are you?
Pennington Mountain. My first request would be that during comments from commissioners, you could speak to the proposal that I made last week, if there's been any discussion or action, and I wasn't able to stick around because I had another meeting I had to go to, but if you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
I really appreciate what my cousin Jim and others are doing.
It's not allowed, it's in a bag.
Scary, huh?
Whoa, what is that?
Good.
Conkra.
Does anybody else not know what this is?
Looks like oyster mushrooms.
This is conk.
Really?
This I cut from a live Douglas fir, but a sick Douglas fir, because conk indicates rot, and it adds to the rot. And we have conk in our forests, in live stands of trees. Conk is just one of the, it's a fungi, is what it is, you know? It's just one of the things that kills our trees and ruins our resources. You know, we've got beetles, and we've got woodworms, and wildfires. How many, what percentage of our trees ever get to maturity? Just because of those natural causes, I just really support the idea of harvesting our natural resources and adding to the financial strength of our county. You know, there's a lot of ways to go about it, but we have this ONC lands problem, and it is a problem, and. In Nye County, Nevada, a few years back, they had the same problem, and they actually took over some government land from the government. They had the help and assistance from the sheriff. The, one of the county commissioners drove a bulldozer and opened up the road end. It took eight months for the government to file lawsuit, and then nothing was ever done about it. We need to have commissioners with the knockers to do something and move quickly in this regard. You know, I'm an old timer, but I've got a log brand, I volunteer, I go in and cut the first tree, and I'll limit, and I'd buck it, and I'd brand it, and then let the young bucks take over. But we've got to have an attitude here, because it's not long, but we're going to be way behind and wondering what to do.
Yeah. Thank you, Michael. You know, something, I didn't get a chance to, we didn't get a chance to talk about your proposal last week. We didn't have an admin meeting on Thursday, I think that was canceled, and then the legal meeting got interrupted.
We had LCDC last week.
Yeah, and then LCDC was on Friday, so we didn't talk about this, but I have it. Made a bunch of copies, and, you know, we will think about it. You know, we will discuss it and see what, I don't think it's going to go anywhere, but I've been advocating it for a while, but we'll see. Well, at least we can talk about it.
It's something that you can do.
Yeah.
There's a lot that you can.
I agree.
Not do, you'd like to do, but that's something that you can do.
I agree. Thank you. Next is Dale.
Dale Matthews, Grants Pass. So two Tuesdays ago, about a dozen people showed up at the, at the legal counsel meeting and said very clearly what they thought about Simon Hare's plan for decorum in these meetings. Let's all be polite from now on. People have asked me, gee, how have things been going since then? Well, I can tell you that for the seven days following that, that seven times either Simon Hare, Mr. Reedy, or other people got up and left the meeting right in the middle when you were talking and only you. So that's not much decorum. I am going to quote now Steve Rich, our county legal counsel. I don't like this kind of language, but I'm quoting him. I had said something about my opinion about something, and Steve Rich interrupted me and said, that's a bunch of crap. So much for decorum. And I had asked Simon Hare, what do you think about that kind of decorum? Simon Hare, uh, Mr. Reedy, or other people got up and left the meeting right in the middle when you were talking and only you. So that's not much decorum. I am gonna quote now Steve Rich, our county legal counsel. I don't like this kind of language, but I'm quoting him. I had said something about my opinion about something, and Steve Rich interrupted me and said, "That's a bunch of crap." So much for decorum. And I had asked Simon Hare, "What do you think about that kind of decorum?" He had nothing to say. Steve Rich later went on to say, "When you were talking about the county and its possible, um, liabilities with, um, with tree houses, he had advised you as official legal counsel that ignorance is bliss." And I had asked you, Commissioner Cassinelli, "What do you think about that idea that ignorance is bliss?" And Mr. Hare, um, later inserted into that, that, he said, "I'm listening to legal counsel, not to, not to," and I said, "Not to citizens?" "Not to you," he said to me. "I would point out that that's not very polite, and it's really not the kind of decorum that I'd like to see in meetings, and also this idea that, well, it's just not about Dale Matthews or certain select citizens." Yes, it is. Let me tell you what Steve Rich then followed to say. "I'm gonna point out to the board that I've never advised the board," said Steve Rich, "to remain stupid." Remain stupid, yes. Uh, "There are some benefits, however, to ignorance." So why is it that the Tuesday legal council meetings are going to be suggested probably by Simon Hare, but have several times by Don Reedy, to be excluded from our TV appearances so that everybody can see them? He's made it very clear, Mr. Reedy has, that he doesn't want, I'm not talking about executive session, of course that doesn't go on TV, but he does not want these to be played. So he will no longer be able to talk about honesty and transparency in government. Mr. Hare will no longer be able to talk about decorum, 'cause I've asked him three times since these things have happened. "Do you think this is the right kind of decorum?" And he said nothing to say about this, except one time he did say, "Well, I think that's, that's about right." When two employees got up and walked out in the middle when you were trying to talk. Any questions for me? Anything you might wanna say now while I'm still standing here?
No.
No comments at all?
Thank you, Dale.
Well, how about if I just wait here and welcome the next person in case he does decide to talk?
Mark.
Why not Mark? I'm gonna welcome you, bud. Welcome to the microphone.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Mark's, with that introduction. Mark Seligman, Selma, Oregon. Uh, I wanna say one thing briefly. I read in the paper the other day that a tax deferral on properties for senior citizens, according to the governor, is no longer an option. Well, I don't know if I heard that right, but, uh, it was suggested to me once upon a time that if we ever had a property tax levy, the senior citizens, you know, they can always defer that later. Well, that's not an option anymore. So, um, last week we discussed property tax levies, and I was incorrect. People's taxes will not be triple, uh, but they will go up. And of course, we voted against that numerous times, against it. So any Commissioner that votes for it in any shape, way, or form will be going against public opinion and what they campaigned on. Now, also in the news, federal funding, right now before Congress, is a bill to help the counties, so we might not even need these tax levies. And I've been saying, federal funding will not go away. They owe us this money, and it's like a broken record. These Commissioners, and you're not the only one, Simon, but other Commissioners in the past have favored these tax levies, or insinuated they favored them, and they fail to see this money has never gone away, and I don't think it ever will. Now, to the point Dale was raising, I showed up at my first legal meeting last time, and I, Dale said, "Oh, I wanted two people show up." There were more than twelve people that showed up. And one of the questions that was asked right off the bat was, "Who put this public decorum matter on the agenda?" Commissioner Cassinelli asked, neither Commissioner copped to it, in fact, they denied that they did it. Dale Matthews asked, he didn't get an answer, and I finally asked, and finally Commissioner Hare said, "Yes, I did." Well, I don't know what the delay was all about, why you just can't admit what it was right off the bat. Anyway, um, it seems to me there's a program here of cutting back citizens' participation. Right now, I know they have at least four meetings that are televised on Charter cable, and I've been told by Dale that, um, two of them are gonna be cut out, the legal meeting's gonna be cut out. So how are we gonna know this information? Now, this recall of Commissioner Cassinelli, this is what this is all about, transparency of government. Some are for it and some aren't. Though those that would prefer that we not have the right to view this, well, they're probably against Commissioner Cassinelli. The local newspaper does not accurately portray what goes on here. That is troubled, troublesome. Opinions are formed based on inaccurate data. Again, I urge people to come to as many meetings as possible, see what transpires here, especially if our access is curtailed. This is freedom of information at stake. Tomorrow morning, I am told that this is gonna be discussed and possibly voted on real quickly. So please come to this meeting. I have a question for Commissioner Hare. Are you considering eliminating, uh, the televising of two of the four meetings?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Okay, uh, well, people, then I'm not, I'm speaking the truth, um, and I'm curious as to what your reason is.
We'll be discussing that tomorrow.
Excuse me?
We'll be discussing that tomorrow.
But you're gonna vote on it tomorrow too, right?
Quite possibly.
Quite possibly. So the public really won't have much of an opportunity to voice their view, will they?
Tomorrow.
And that'll probably be one of the last, and that will probably be one of the last times that type of meeting would, would be televised, correct?
Um, no, admin meetings will always be televised, as far as I know. I don't have...
All right, I'll say one last thing. Well, you just heard it, everybody. Come tomorrow, come to tomorrow's meeting and let these Commissioners know that you do not want your public access, your freedom of information, curtailed. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mark, you know, I really do, it's very upsetting to me because, um, you know, this PEG account was the, the one reason why I ran, just because it was, um, fraught with illegalities. I mean, we were paying RV TV out of the PEG account, which is only supposed to be for capital expenses. So, you know, I advocated, like other counties do, to have community access producers, um, do all the televising and the replays at no cost to the county. From now on, the, the, the paying of RV TV to air like this meeting at two dollars and eight cents, you know, uh, per minute, to me is ludicrous when that money should be going to the sheriff's office. This is a step backwards. It is a, a step to, um, um, you know, given to, to a contractor who has stolen from us, who has lied to us, who is almost on a daily basis breaking our contract that we have with Charter to have it as a nonprofit, um, a non-commercial station. We don't need a, um, a contractor putting on our government station ads for SOU, ads for real estate, um, you know, companies. The list goes on and on and on. To replay a thirty-second commercial, um, over and over and over again for more than eight hours. This is ludicrous, and, and it's, it's gonna be on the agenda tomorrow. Why couldn't it be on a weekly business session when everybody's here? No, we have to have it on a Thursday admin meeting, and it's supposed to be action requested so that it can be, we can go back to the dark ages when, when, um, the public will not know what's happening in the little back rooms in the courthouse.
Commissioner Cassinelli, in your opinion, what is the reason for this? It doesn't cost the county anything to put it on.
It doesn't.
Why do they wanna eliminate it?
Because they don't want the public to know what's going on. That's my opinion.
I'm wondering if Commissioner Hare, what his, um, explanation of it would be. I guess we'll find out tomorrow. People, please come. This is your freedom of information at stake.
Nine AM Thursday. Go ahead.
Judy Aaron's, resident of Grants Pass. To tailgate on that, that subject regarding the PEG account and everything, and I'm not that familiar with it, but what I like to, uh, bring to focus here is that where my, my confusion is here, Commissioner Hare and Cassinelli is at, we have two or three meetings where they're making, uh, you're making decisions at all these different meetings. And then, and then, you know, Commissioner Hare, I think you've shared with me that, you know, go on the internet or come to the meetings, whatever. We, we actually have lives. People actually have to make money in order to pay your salaries and fantastic pensions and all these good, all these things. We don't wanna complain, but we'd at least like to know where, where we could, where people could actually work, make a living, so you can take the money out of their taxes. I mean, I don't wanna go through all the simple economics, but it's there. If we have to do a chart, we'll do a chart in the future, a simple Ross Perot chart. But my, my point is, why not? Why not? Give me some logical reason, not just lame reasoning. Why it would not be to the betterment of the people you serve to at least combine decision-making items, for instance, regarding the PEG account? I don't wanna hear, well, it's because this is that. I, I think it's kinda ironical, or it's almost insulting to say, well, come to a meeting tomorrow, whatever. We're just gonna drop all our personal life, things that we're, I mean, just tons of things that we do that affect our personal lives. It's important, um, for us to drop everything to come to a meeting instead of a meeting for three hours. I've been doing that a little bit, and I'm just so backlog, I'm so backlog because I show an interest in my community, then I have to stay up late to get my personal stuff. It just doesn't, if you could look at me and say, "Is it fair or is it not fair?" It seems so unfair. I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose in the future and put it on the agenda, we're gonna start putting things on the agenda. We're gonna find a way, you have slips in the office, we're gonna put things on the agenda, and we're actually gonna say, like, for instance, we want all these decision makings except for your personnel issues and your contracting, things like that, you know, that are, um, closed session items. We would like this streamlined in one meeting. I mean, other states did, I mean, this is not bizarre, what I'm asking and requesting. It's actually very sane that we combine everything, so then people don't have to go to meetings all day. I don't think, um, Mr. Matthews likes to always go to me, I really don't. I feel like he's got a life too. He wants to do other things. And, and before my time runs out, uh, I just wanna focus, I will put that on an agenda item. If you refuse it, it will be made in record that you refused it, but it will be brought to the administrator's decision to put on the agenda. We will start doing this. I'm going to have clauses in it if I have to. Number two is, um, uh, it's just wonderful what, I mean, I don't know why he's not sitting up there, Michael Klein. I really don't know why he's not sitting up there. Uh, he, he's fantastic. Uh, he's my hero, and I don't even know the gentleman. But this proposal he had here, it, it, it's so logical, it makes so much sense. It's what can save a community. And, um, it's just twenty, ten seconds? It can save a community. So, once again, uh, this needs to be put on the agenda. You have absolutely very, I don't have in front of me, very little on the agenda. This is where the public comes. We, we are conditioned to come here. We, we rearrange our schedule to come here. We don't wanna be hopping all over the place during the week. There are funerals, there are weddings, there are birthdays, there's things to come to. And I want you to have a conscience and a heart, a conscience and a heart to think how we could make it friendly for the community, not work as, as we're their adversaries, but, but you represent us and show us some, some friendship, something. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I really do believe that, that, you know, it's inappropriate to say, "Oh, well, we're gonna discuss that, you know, two weeks from tomorrow," or, you know, "Tomorrow," or whatever. You know, um, we get paid to go to these meetings, you guys don't. I've been on that side, and I know what an inconvenience it is to come from, you know, Kirby, or Illinois Valley, or Williams, or, or Wolf Creek. Um, a lot of people that come to these meetings come a long distance, and they don't get paid. And, and it's a great sacrifice, and if we can streamline it, I'm, I'm all for it. And, and a decision like the one we're gonna have tomorrow, there's a couple of decisions on the agenda tomorrow that, um, in, in my opinion, have no business being on a, a, a little, you know, admin meeting when nobody comes. It should be on the weekly business session. This is the, the, the county's business, and it's the public's business, and it should be here on Wednesdays. I agree.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, just a couple of things. Thank, thank you, Judy. I, I, I actually, I really appreciate the, the points that you made, 'cause I think that, uh, in, in the discussion we'll have tomorrow, um, people will have an opportunity to, to kind of further understand. The, the first thing is, is that when we have an agenda item, that's the opportunity that the public, regardless of whether or not it's convenient, that's what we are supposed to do, to make it available for everybody to hear the deliberations on the decision for that topic. I know it's not convenient for everybody, but the point that you made was really great about putting all of the decisions at meetings that, we, we won't be doing them all at one meeting, but we will be reducing the decisions made at our HR and our legal meeting and moving those to, to the admin meeting. 'Cause they're administrative. They're not setting policy, and they're not spending money. Those are the meetings, those are the decisions that I see here at, at our weekly business session, and those will probably remain that way.
I appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner Hare, and, and I realize there's things that have to be made there, just administrative things. I'm talking about things that really, that really will reflect on, on our, our community, on this county, where all these rural cities come together and come far and wide to come to this meeting. I, I think there has to be more prudence and, and more thought and conscious decision-making that when you make these things, I don't have a problem with you, uh, making decisions for what's going on at the administrative office where Terry is, or we're gonna streamline and, 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 you know, whatever. I, I think that's fine, or we're gonna have a different procedure for doing something in the office. But you have to realize that when it, when we're talking about the taxpayers' money, I mean, the tax, I can't emphasize that enough, the taxpayers' money.
I don't wanna interrupt you, Judy, but I, I wasn't done either, so I don't...
You what?
I, I wasn't done either.
Oh, okay, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't think that I wanna belabor this, because I don't think you're hearing me. 'Cause I said that all decisions that affect money, finances, or setting policy will be done at our weekly business sessions. That's an underlying rule that we have here. So administrative things, um, hiring personnel and those kinds of things, that's an administrative kinda deal.
I don't disagree with you.
And that'll happen on Thursdays.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
And we won't be making any decisions on, at our legal meeting, or our HR meeting, or any other meeting. They need to be made in the public, at the ambassador, and I'm a huge advocate of that kind of transparency.
The only thing, what we're talking about, which I think Commissioner Cassinelli is making reference to, and some people out here that feel very strongly against a decision that might possibly be brought up or made tomorrow, and I'm not going, 'cause I've got other things to do, but, uh, to be made regarding, um, uh, the PEG account and all that, um, and the monies, and to, to, to be having, uh, to be paying for the taxpayer, I'm gonna use that word because that's what it is, the taxpayer foring, paying for two minutes for whatever it is to run this meeting versus having that, uh, provided by the county, you know, free how it's doing. Instead of going what's coming around, I think you folks need to find out what's coming around the corner. There's some people out there that have been sharing that there's some heavy duties coming down. The clock's ticking, according to Michael Klein, and I believe him. So if, if we, if we, if we do these, you do these things tomorrow, I think it's gonna be to your political disadvantage, and I'm not saying that to throw, I'm just saying it's gonna be to somebody's political disadvantage if they do that. And you're caught over here with, now we've got monies over here, and we're paying for that, and, and all these things, and we don't have money to run our, our county. Somebody's gonna pay a big political price for that, trust me.
I wanna tell you, though, that Commissioner Hare said that, you know, anything that involves money or policy or something that we're gonna have at the weekly business session, this is the administrative meeting for tomorrow, and under Board Business, it says, "Proposed telecast policy, action required," or "Action requested." So, you know what? You can't tell me that it wasn't planned to have a decision tomorrow on, on this telecast policy.
That's not an administrative item. I mean, it's how we define things.
It's not.
You have to define things by the true definition. Thank you very much.
I see it as administrative.
Well, money's involved. Who else? Who next? Uh, Rika?
Rika Brown, fourteen fifteen Southwest Bridge Street, Grants Pass. So far, only one person has contacted me about being on a town hall panel to discuss funding our county when federal payments run out next year, and that was Dale Matthews, who wanted to discuss alternatives other than taxes on sales or a property tax levy. Apparently, we still need convincing that we need to fund our own county and not be dependent on the goodwill of other governments. Therefore, if no one wants to be on this panel in support of funding our own public safety, then we may have a debate between Mr. Matthews and me regarding the need for taxing ourselves a bit more and for changing our tax system. Last week, Chairwoman Cassinelli told us about a proposal for a one dollar per thousand temporary property tax levy that would barely fill the hole left by the end of federal safety net funding. This will only maintain our present low level of service from the sheriff, leaving us still in our chronic jail overcrowding, actually understaffing, emergency, that leaves half the jail empty while allowing pot possession convicts to thumb their noses at probation as I did. Property tax levies are not well-suited to paying salaries and keeping up with rises in population or tourism. More people does not mean more revenue, especially since changes in land use that would raise assess- would raise assessed value are mostly forbidden outside the urban growth boundary. With the drop in housing values, we cannot even depend on the allowed 3% per year rise in valuations. Some assessments are even being lowered. Sales tax brings in more revenue the more people there are spending money, whether residents or tourists. Since the feds and state of Oregon have turned our resource-based economy into a tourism economy, we need to tax our tourists. We cannot fund our government totally on the backs of either property owners or tourists. We need to tax everyone. There are a lot of fans in this county of Arizona's Sheriff Arpaio. I got a forwarded email praising his move to take over animal control and run it with jail inmates. The only reason he can do that is Arizona has sales tax, which allows him to hire deputies as necessary to guard those prisoners as they work. Meanwhile, our sheriff can barely fill, barely half fill a big, new, efficient jail and must release convicts who are not dangerous enough to justify holding them, because he cannot hire enough deputies. We can do better. We can do sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Rika. Anybody else for the three minutes? Dawn?
Hi, I'm Dawn Sales from Grants Pass. I didn't have anything to say about item number two, except for I just wanted to thank Rich Halliday. I worked with him when I worked for the county, and he wasn't, he wasn't do-as-I-say-but-don't-do-as-I-do kinda person.
Yep.
He did it and got it done, so I just wanna say thank you in public for all you did. But I wanted to also share that, an experience I had at a place where I volunteer and work that, about this recall, I might be tardy or behind, you know, on the information, I've been keeping up on it because, anyhow, but any, I was approached to sign the petition, and I played dumb, I'm like, what petition? And, you know, you know, she just went on and on with all these things that I didn't, I just said, oh, I didn't know that, I didn't know that. And she was like, well, you are registered. And I said, yeah. And she's like, well, will we sign it? And I said, no, because I believe, I haven't seen anything in concrete where she's broken laws. I realize that people don't like her tactics or her personality, and I can't vote on personality, I have to vote on if she's done something wrong, but I'm not saying I'm voting one way or the other, I'm just telling you. And so she just said, okay, whatever, and walked away. And then about two days later, she was there again, and the, this group that I work with, they range from 60 to 100 years old, and she's walking around with this petition, and I was surprised that a lot of these people weren't even registered to vote, so she was registering them to vote, to sign the petition. And so I finally went up to her and said, this is against policy in our establishment. And, and my personal comment is, you know, if they vote for either Simon or whoever, you're registered to vote, but if you have to go around and trick somebody to register to vote to sign a petition, even if it's one person, I feel it's a tainted petition. But anyhow, I had one man, you know, I went up to him, I said, you know what you just signed, just out of curiosity? And he said, well, they said that they're registering me to vote. And I said, is that all? And he said, well, something about a petition or a recall. I'm like, you know, still playing, well, who? And, and I said, did they say Sandy Cassinelli? Oh, yeah, yeah. And so I sat and I just, I said, I'm not saying one way or another, but I just wanna explain to you what you just signed. And he's, his words were, I was as duped as, and I, and I said, I'm sorry you were, I said, you know, it wasn't your fault, you know, but I know it happens a lot, and I don't agree with a lot of the way people are trying to get the recall or the petition signed. I'm not up here to say, you know, one way or another, but it was just, I wanted to share what I was seeing out there in an establishment for the elderly.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your...
Thank you very much. And, and I really do agree wholeheartedly with your comments about Rich Halliday. You know, I've been liaised onto him for probably two years, two years and 10 months, and you know something? I said, Rich, I got a problem, I'll take care of it. And he does, you know, Rich, I got this, he takes care of it. He's, of all my departments, he's probably one of the few departments that I don't have to worry about, you know, bomb is in good hands with Rich Halliday, so I agree wholeheartedly. Thank you. Anybody else? Are you, oh, these are caps, Dale first and then Mark. Yeah, Rebottles.
Dale Matthews, Grants Pass. Gee, I'd love to ask Dawn to come up and tell us who that was that did that. It's a person that drives a black car, has short, dirty blond hair, and is one of the main advisors to Ed Bowers. I think we all know who that is. I was also told personally by people at a, at a recall booth that didn't recognize me that Sandy Cassinelli always votes no on veterans. She always votes no on kittens and sunshine. She is just the most terrible person in the world. They can say anything that they want. Thank you, ma'am.
Mark was next.
So, there's gonna be a meeting tomorrow, and policy is gonna be set regarding TV coverage, so what you're saying, Commissioner Hair, is not true. You know, you can fool some of the people some of the time, and you can fool, you can't fool us all the time. Basically, I'll sum it up with this, if you can't see government in action, you can't question it. Commissioner Hair obviously doesn't want government questioned.
Anybody else? Uh, Rika?
Rika Brown. I do believe Mark is correct. You are setting policy, and it should come to a weekly business session according to your own policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Rika. Anybody else? Seeing none, what we'll do is we'll bring it back to the board. What do you got, Simon?
I only have a few things. There's an animal shelter fundraiser on Saturday at Applebee's from 8:00 to 10:00, and the cost is $7. I think it's for, I shouldn't say this, all-you-can-eat pancakes. It may not be all-you-eat, all-you-can-eat, but it is just $7 from 8:00 to 10:00 at Applebee's, and it's a fundraiser for the animal shelter, and, Saturday?
Okay.
Saturday. There's a bike rodeo also happening that day. I don't know the times, but it's in the Walmart parking lot, and I think it's from 10:00 to 2:00, but don't quote me on that. Get there in the middle of the day and you'll be fine. And there's an art exhibit at RCC, Kirby Building, I think that's at 6:00 PM Saturday evening. And I just received an email, well, Mr. Klein was talking about Concorde. It had to do with the red tree vole and establishing it as an endangered species under the Endangered Species Act. And I think if we thought the spotted owl was bad, the red tree vole being on the ESA list would be 10 times worse, so. I've never personally seen one, so maybe they are endangered, but I wouldn't know it if I saw it. That's, that's happening here really soon, and I think the, the board should probably get educated on that and weigh in if possible, so.
Well, it sounds good.
Yeah. Other than that, I think that's pretty much, pretty much it.
Wow. As I frantically look through my glasses, 'cause I can't read anything.
You want me to hold them over here?
No. That, that might work. Go way over there, New Jersey.
Keep walking, keep way.
There you go. I just wanna tell you that we have a couple of openings in the county. One is for, in the assessor's office for department specialists. It closes Tuesday, October 18th, it's part-time. We have a fairgrounds maintenance worker that is on call. That will close Friday also, the 14th. Public Works, we have a mechanic, it closes, applications, you know, will close on Friday, October 14th. It's for a full-time mechanic. The sheriff has a police support technician fill-in. It will close on Friday also, and it's on call. So those are, let's see, I guess that's it. Then we have a bunch of advisory board openings still. Parks Board has vacancies, two of them. Grants Pass Airport Advisory Board has one at-large and one tenant user. That'll be closed October 26th. Rogue Valley Area Commission on Transportation has four alternate positions open. Josephine County Mental Health Advisory Board has, we need representatives of law enforcement, someone representing the medical field, either a physician or a nurse practitioner, and a consumer or a family member of consumer. The local alcohol and drug planning commission, commission also, committee also needs one at-large position and one clergy position. And then the Josephine County Rural Area Planning Commission currently has no vacancies, we just accept applications so that she could be put on a list. I think there's gonna be, I don't know whether I should say this, because it's an old, I got this September 29th from the city, but it says that Thursday, October 13th, at the Grants Pass High School Commons...
You're right.
There's gonna be an open house, the doors will be open from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and you can go and, you know, it says, we are now in the options for possible revision or refinement to the draft UGB concept phase. So that's cool. And then, this is just, it's political, so I don't even know whether I should say it, but they're gonna have a For Liberty video at the Ambassador Auditorium, Thursday, October 13th, from 7:30 to 9:00 PM. So I guess everybody's invited, it's a free event, so come watch a video, For Liberty, whatever that is. And then, I don't know if the Josephine County Soil and Water Conservation District wants to make the annual meeting public, do you know? Oh, it's in the paper? Okay. It's Octo, Monday, October 17th, 2011, starts at 6:00 PM at the Grants Pass Golf Course and Club, 230 Espy Road. You can call 474-6840 if you would like to attend that annual meeting of the Josephine Soil and Water Conservation District. And that's all I had, 'cause I already updated you on what was happening today, so...
Have you read everything for tomorrow?
No. I gotta go home and, this is it! We'll read it for tomorrow.
That's the only part, you got all the minutes too. I got a couple left to do.
All right. All right, with that, we will adjourn. Thank you all for attending and coming up and speaking.
Yep.
Oh, we got something assigned? Oh, we got something assigned?